Let's go ahead and bring our February 23rd Board of Trustees meeting in order. All rise and pledges please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you folks. Roll call when you're ready. Crystal?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here. Here.
Let's start over. Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here.
Are there any amendments that you need to be aware of tonight? Any conflicts of interest we need to be aware of?
So I was listening in on the Planning Commission when they discussed item number two. I don't feel it'll be any issue, but I did want to disclose that I was listening in on that meeting.
Okay, it's not a conflict though.
I do not believe so.
Okay. Move on item B. This is a public comment. This is a time for the public to weigh in on items that are not on our agenda tonight. If you're in the public and wish to talk about something that are on our agenda, you can raise your hand in your chat box if you're on Zoom or you can approach a podium here and you'll be given three minutes to talk about your subject. You'll want to introduce your name and address for the record and at this time, open it up to the public.
May I see no hands raised at this time?
Point of information, Kathy Waddell has raised her hand.
Alright. Yep, you're up first.
Okay. Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street. I just wanted to share with you that I came from Southern California, which is very crowded and populated. And when you're driving from one city to the next, there's no break in between and you don't know that you went through one city into the next, other than the sign that says, "Welcome to the city." So it was very different coming to Colorado. And that's one of the things that convinced me to come because I don't like the weather here, coming from Southern California. But was driving from Fort Collins to Wellington through Highway One. Even on the freeway, you have those open spaces, the farms. Most of them, they're private property, open spaces is what I'm talking about. So it's farms, it's houses on big lots. That's what drew me here to Wellington is this small town feel, is this open space. It feels like a countryside. And I don't want that to change here in Wellington because that's what brought me here, away from Southern California. And the land use map, I feel like it will take those things away from me, especially on Highway One. It will no longer be scenic. It's going to be the commercial on Highway One. It's going to be the mixed use on Highway One. And my neighborhood, downtown neighborhood is going to be higher density. And I didn't like that about Southern California. It was too dense for me, too many people. It felt too crowded. What I want for this town is bigger lots. So it would be more like rural feeling, small town feeling, country feeling lots such as Wellington West and the Pheasant Run Ridge. Those are big lots, acre, half acre. I want to see more of those because then you see open spaces, but it's not public open spaces. It's private open spaces with a house in the middle and lots of open area and you just don't feel so confined and closed in. So I don't like the land use map right now and I would like to see it the opposite. And then walkability to me means the ability to walk around the downtown shops. And I believe that we already can. I live downtown and I can walk to the library. I can walk here. I can walk to Ridley's and I can walk to the restaurants downtown. And that's walkability to me. It's already happened. I don't think we need to change it. I don't think we need to make it denser to make it walkable. People who live in like sage homes, that's five minutes away, they can drive, park in front of my house and walk downtown and enjoy the downtown. So I believe it's already walkable. And then the other one is vibrant. To me, that means more mom and pop shops, filling in those shops that are empty or where there aren't retail shops is what I like to see, but I don't want it to be more crowded downtown. So that's my big thing is small town feeling to me means private property that is bigger. So I just wanted to share that I'm not happy with the land use map and I'd like to see the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy, you on? This is White Dallas.
Okay, I think I did it right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is something that is kind of on the agenda, but you don't usually ask for a public comment about it because it's the minutes. So I just wanted to say that I think the minutes are terrific. They're really long and they're really detailed. And so whoever's doing the minutes, I think is doing a wonderful job. I saw that, you know, something I said was like, I don't remember saying that, but it turns out I did say it. So I wanted to sort of clarify what I said. What's in the minutes is that I felt that the town was the biggest problem by watering during the day and after rainstorms. And I certainly, I just must lose my vocabulary in good sense when I talk in public. So I wanted to clarify what I meant is I don't feel that the town is the biggest problem as far as the watering, their watering goes. I realize a lot of the parks have non potable water. I mean, they have people who work there and have to, they can't tell where the coverage is in the middle of the night because they don't work in the middle of the night, things like that. So I'm sure there's plenty of reasons and mostly I just thought, my gosh, that sounds like I'm dissing our Public Works people. And I think I like our Public Works Department. I think they do a lot of hard work and they're terrific. So I just wanted to clarify what I meant and I guess apologize for being such a dork when I speak in public. So thank you.
Thank you Kathy for bringing that up. And it's Crystal who does our minutes. Nice job.
She does do a great job.
We've ever had a compliment on our minutes.
No, I used to do them for the Parks Board and it's really a hard job. So I'm impressed.
Thank you for bringing it up. And they are better, much, much better. Okay, anyone else?
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public comment meeting at this time and get ready to move on to our. It looks like we got some presentations. First one's going to be Parks and Recreation Manager Introduction, Dean Campos.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to say I appreciate very much the opportunity to be with the Town of Wellington. I think there's some value in expressing who I am, a little bit of my experience and then going into kind of what I see for the vision of Parks and Recreation holistically. So first and foremost, I want to thank you for approving the merging of Parks into Recreation because I truly believe that was essential in moving us forward for future successes. And that's kind of the industry standard. So with that being said, I'll hit a little bit of an introduction of who I am, experience, and then my vision, well, our vision. So my name's Dean Campos, the Parks and Recreation Manager for here in the wonderful town of Wellington. I have about 10 plus years of experience within the Parks and Recreation industry, specifically surrounding strategic planning, operations management, program management. And something that I've had a more focused, I guess, strategy on is financial sustainability. So and that's where I've gained the most, I guess, a good reputation within the industry. I've also taught in higher education at University of Northern Colorado, specifically within their Human Services Department, dedicated to the Recreation Tours and Hospitality major. I teach finance, business within that major, how to look at recreation and more of that business mentality. And then also strategic planning. I've actually had a unique opportunity within my experience to not only work within the recreation industry, but also in private business and corporations and municipal work. So I have a good, I guess, skill set that has brought value to different organizations that just, I think, a little bit differently, think a little bit outside the box. And then also I've owned a consulting company for about five years specifically dedicated, excuse me, to change management and organizational development. I've worked with professionals in companies such as Amazon, CarMax, Bloomberg, New York City, and then Environmental Sustainability Construction Company called Aroku out in South Carolina. So I have a good mix in experience, but my passion and my heart, for lack of a better term, is within Parks and Recreation. And I've had the wonderful opportunity to impact different organizations through being a part of a board called the Emerging Leaders Network Board for the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association. I'm known within the state and actually have gained some attention from nationally ranked CEO coach Deborah Benton. And she allowed me a wonderful opportunity to write a little excerpt in her book, her last book, The Leadership Mind Switch, just because of the success I've had from an organizational development standpoint within my career. With all that being said, I think there's value in expressing a little bit who I am, my experience. But moving into the vision for Parks and Recreation Department for the Town of Wellington, I think we have so much potential here that I think we're barely scratching the surface. We're in a unique position because of COVID-19. And within the industry right now, there's a lot of municipalities that are hurting. And I think we're that outlier where, you know, we're, you know, doing very well because of sales tax, which provides a great opportunity to look at things and doing things the right way from a financial standpoint. And if I were to categorize the goals to support the vision and the vision is to be, you know, the best town in the state surrounding strategic planning facilities and then also the programs and events that we are going to hold. If I were to categorize, I guess, objectives, it would be probably four. The first one would be financial responsibility. We're going through a cost recovery process right now with the merging of Parks into Recreation, really looking at things differently and implementing a new innovative strategy to make sure that we're not only supporting the revenues that will be coming in with the current programs that we have, but also to support a potential facility coming in, doing things the right way in that manner. The second piece, I would have to say engagement. So I truly believe that the Parks and Recreation Department is the heartbeat of the Town of Wellington. And I want to make sure that as we start moving forward in building this department, that the community is heard loud and clear from, you know, the programs that we offer, the events that we do, and then the open spaces in parks. So I think that's a big piece of it as well. The third would probably have to be strategic planning. So specifically dedicated to financial sustainability and being responsible with taxpayer dollars to support the parks and open spaces that we have now and then moving forward within, hopefully building a facility. The fourth, I would have to say that I hold dearly to my heart is probably staff development. So making sure that I'm doing everything in my power to ensure that our staff have the skills necessary to not only be amazing human beings, but also amazing professionals, ready for that next step. If it's with the Town of Wellington or if it's elsewhere, I'm a big believer in servant leadership. And I think giving back in that manner is what raises, you know, or builds our culture in a very positive way, which indirectly helps with performance and helps with moving us forward. But that's how I categorize the goals to support the ultimate vision. And I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity just to, you know, show my face and express who I am. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
And trustees, any questions? Dean?
I'm super excited. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, this would echo what Trustee Kenny said. I'm excited to have you on board. I really like that you bring the business experience. I think a lot of times in government, sometimes that's a piece that's missing. You run a business differently than a government. I don't know if you can in like two minutes. I know Patty was telling me a little bit about this cost recovery that you started doing. I was so ecstatic because I am very much about fiscal conservative and Parks and Rec. That doesn't usually go together. So she was telling, could you give us like a two minute or one minute or whatever of what exactly it is that you're learning or looking to do? Because I think that's exciting.
Yeah, absolutely. I can definitely give you that. So right now what we're doing is partnering with a company called 110%. It's a consulting company that's specifically dedicated to going through the process of the cost recovery pieces with different Parks and Recreation Departments. It's interesting because within this timeframe of COVID-19, like you expressed, there's a ton of municipalities that are being forced to look at things differently from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. So to the process, what that looks like is, I guess I can give you kind of a snapshot. It's first looking at all the data that we have back into probably a five-year trend of what our expenditures have looked like, what our revenues have looked like. And then defining clearly service categories. And then after we define service categories collectively as a town, then us really figuring out, okay, well, what, how do we base these service categories off of community benefit versus individual benefit? And then we go through a process of determining our fee schedule from there. So ideally, the revenues that we or the fees that we decide will help support not only the Recreation Department, but also the parks because parks being a community benefit, I mean, that's a given. But looking at things holistically to make sure that we're balancing the budget accordingly. So hopefully that provides a little bit of insight.
That's fantastic. I'm excited to have you on board and I'm glad to see what you're doing already. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah, I'm excited to have you on board. You come from, I believe, Greeley. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
Um, so a couple of quick things. Have you ever, this is a little off topic, but have you ever done like a disc profile or Enneagram or Skills Finder?
Yes, we actually, I utilized Strengths Finder when I was leading teams in Greeley. And we actually had a whole, I guess, educational sessions and taking the Strengths Finder first. And then after that, going through and breaking down a plan for each employee. I haven't really thought that far yet with Town of Wellington, but that is definitely something that is of major, major value to identify skill sets within our staff.
Well, I'm curious what your top, what is your, do you remember what your top?
I'd have to, I'd have to look and I can send them to you because I find those interesting, but I don't know offhand. I apologize now.
Well, homework assignment then.
Awesome.
And then you said something else that was interesting for me was servant leadership. So tell me how, what that means to you and how you plan to bring that to our recreational organization.
Awesome. I think that's a great question. My, my style of leadership, I guess the best way I can put it is there's a picture that I hold in my home office where there's, I guess there's a leader that is on this, you know, pillar that's telling people what to do. And then there's a leader that's with the people actually leading and lifting the heavy object moving forward. So that is kind of the picture analogy that I always use with my teams. But I think being selfless and being able to give of myself as much as I can, I think there's a lot of value I can bring from a leadership development standpoint, from the hard skills and tactful skills to the intangible pieces. And so teaching as much as I can, the, those skills that I've learned over, you know, the time that I've had in my career. I also got my master's at Colorado State University in organizational development and change management. So having that background as well really has helped in mentoring staff and helping them get to the next level. So I guess, and I guess the best word is just being selfless.
Well, it sounds like you have a lot of passion for your, the career path that you've chosen. I'm really excited to get to work with you in recreation. I take advantage of a lot of the programs that we offer. So I'll have my eye on you.
Nice, nice. Looking forward to it.
Well, thanks for taking the job. Our town really takes our Parks and Rec very seriously and they use them a lot. And COVID has been a big impact, as you know, but I think we're going to come out of it. And I look forward to seeing the advancements you can make and exploding some of that and shoring up the areas that needed. And with the equipment, with whatever, all of that stuff that we need to update and get going on. Because I talked to a lot of people that asked, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? Why can't we do this? And I'm pointing to the board that's doing this stuff on the frontline work and that's you. So I look forward to that stuff being shored up, you know, those questions and those things. We've seen some results. I look forward to seeing it. Three months, let's hear about it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Bet. Okay, we have another presentation. Library Manager Introduction, Ross Leganes.
Roger.
Leganes.
It's okay. I don't know.
Venture Italian. What do we got?
It's French.
It's French. Ah, okay.
Oops, sorry. So I had this whole plan to follow Dean and now I see that was a mistake. Because he pretty much took everything I was going to say. So now I have to really re scramble. And I do want to show you on my personal cellphone.
Oh, you've done the Enneagram. Okay, cool.
Just last night. So I'll share that in a second. So I went old school. I do have almost a similar background. By the way, I am Ross Leganes. I'm the new director at the Public Library, about two months in, so I'm a little fresh. I have a background in middle level education and also in business. But my main focus is I am a resident of Wellington and I raised two children here. So I have immediate buy-in. I really care what happens to this town because it is a part of a legacy for my children. So they are my driving force. I really, really like this committee. I am a Fort Collins native. Please don't judge me. We always knew that Wellington was here. This is where we did our high school drinking. But this whole Northern Colorado corridor, my dad helped build. So I grew up with responsible growth. And sometimes it happens and you have to be smart about it. So I grew up in that culture. And I went to the city council meetings with my dad. And so I kind of know what the Town of Wellington is facing right now. And I'm actually really excited about it. I love the library. I do believe, number one, in collaboration with the residents. Wellington is growing. And so my almost number one priority mission is to make sure that every single resident is honored by the library. And we have resources to honor the changing demographics because it is changing. I want to honor the past, but also look to the future and make sure that the library is a safe place for everyone. Let me breathe. It's funny, I'm two months in and there are a lot of libraries in towns our size and towns that are larger that are really struggling and are actually being shut down. Ours is not. Our numbers are actually increasing. I'm out there at the school lines giving out candy. We're here, we're working on programs. I think we have a really, really good chance of doing really well. It is a personal passion of mine. I feel that I have a strong civic duty to make sure that we provide access to every single resident in a financially responsible way. I am DRH and I look at everything because it is taxpayer dollars. So taking that, all of that kind of into mind, the Wellington Public Library was lacking a mission statement and vision statement. And I think it's key to any entity to have something that the staff knows we have to adhere to and the residents know we are adhering to. So as an introduction, I just wanted to share and, oh no, can I approach the bench? Is it called a bench? Is this law and order? And I have yet to put it up. I've yet to put it up in the public law because I wanted to share it with the board first.
If you want to hand them to Trustee Gary, I'll just pass them down.
And the reason I printed them out is I would like you to keep them because it is accountability. So what I crafted was our mission statement from here on out is the Wellington Public Library, in cooperation with the Town of Wellington, honors our history with focused intent on the future. Our mission is to serve and reflect every member of our community in an enlightened, democratic and unified approach. Our guiding ideals are community, connection, curiosity, period. Like my shirt.
I want one.
We might be selling them because I'm all about making money for the library. But yeah, I did, you know, sometimes everybody thinks it's something simple. And we're trying to kind of revamp the library. We're taking advantage of this somewhat downtime while our numbers are increasing to really restructure the library. Our vision statement is the Wellington Public Library abides by the vision to promote curiosity, knowledge and exploration through access to a myriad of global and innovative media applications and programs that foster a safe and inclusionary place to share and connect with our community. Community is huge and we have, you know, Dean said Parks and Rec is, you know, the heart. I think the library is the heart, which is why we're collaborating. We work really well together. We do have, Dean and I talk a lot and I think Parks and Rec and the library is a natural fit. Like coffee and books, like just works well together. So that is where we're going. And I would like to put the mission statement up in the lobby so that our residents know what we're focusing on. With your blessing. To me, a public library is the great equalizer. It's an entity that makes one feel connected and not isolated or alienated. There's a whole room of knowledge in there. And that's very important to me. I think it's key to a community and it is a heart of connection. And it gives people access and not everybody has access. So access is very important to me. So today I finished leadership, this ongoing staff programs that were, I attended a leadership meeting, learned a lot about myself. Not everybody appreciates my energy. I'm a little frenetic. I'm working, developing relationships with businesses in town. I think we're all in this together. And if we all work together, other things will happen. So today I had to sit down and I thought, all right, I'm going to throw it on my little index card and bring it in for tonight. And I had to write what my leadership purpose was. And so it's a working draft. But I wrote down to compassionately support people, to be comfortable with discomfort so that they can expand and chase their curiosities. I like curiosity. I like it when people are uncomfortable because it means you're learning something. That's what I want to provide in the library. So, and then on that note, I am, I discovered I'm a helper because you might ask, I'm a helper. But that's a little bit about me. It's my first time, maybe the second one. I have to present, I'll be a little less nervous.
Well, Ross, we hope to hear from you very soon. Again, trustees, anything, any questions for Ross?
The mission and vision statements are beautiful and I'm really happy that you're representing Wellington. And I'm very excited about what's coming. I've never felt so emotional about the library before. So you are bringing something out of me. So thank you very much. But I'm sad that this is my first time meeting you. I wish I would have met you before. So.
I've only been here two months and I'm the guy in Ridley's in like snowflake PJs handing out patron cards. Like I have patron cards in my bag. If you're not patrons, shame on you. Become one. That's why our numbers are up.
I'll be looking for your.
I didn't want to go into, you know, we're working on a lot of, I am a dreamer. I go, I shoot big. And then I'm okay with falling halfway. If we're the Royal Danish Library, like in Denmark, I'm great with that. So we're working on, we also, I appreciate the strategic plan. I appreciate the strategic plan. We're working on a big project with different entities in the town of Wellington to zero scape the front of the library. I think it is a good demonstration of a town facility lowering its water footprint too. We live in the high desert. And I'm working on zero dollars. Just so everybody knows, I always shoot for zero dollars out of the library budget.
If you need any volunteers, let us know.
Okay, I'm taking, all right. I'm going to call you tomorrow.
I'll wait for warmer weather. And then I have a project I would like to talk to you about potentially about archiving some historical items for Wellington. So that's a side project, but thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for making a safe space.
Anyone else?
Just, I appreciate your energy and it even comes out in the updates that Patty sends us in the week. So it's great to hear. Not to make other people in town feel bad, but I get to the library one, I'm like, I have never realized how much stuff goes on in a library. So I just appreciate the energy that you're bringing to it and I think it's fantastic. And it was great to get the email from you. At first I was like, hold on, I was like, oh.
We're supposed to talk about that.
No, it was great. I was, I was excited as a trustee to get an email from town staff and just wanting to, it was fantastic. So it really made my day.
And I should have started with, I do appreciate, I do appreciate the board approving our budget. I really do. I, I meant it. I had gratitude because this is a hard year. And so I came in, in December and I thought, I'm going to come into a 40% budget and I want to do all these grand things. And so I really do appreciate the face. And remember I am cheap. I watch every single dollar.
I like inexpensive better. It sounds so much better than cheap.
I'm okay with whatever you want to hear.
No. But I'm really excited about your passion for the library and bringing that programming to the community. I think that's important. And something else that I really like about the leadership style that you shared with us is your passion for curiosity. I don't remember what my Enneagram is off the top of my head, but my top skill finder is the achiever.
Oh, and if you want to, it has all of them on there.
But coming from a place of curiosity is something that I think as an adult, we forget to do often. So I appreciate your passion and what you're going to bring to the organization. And thank you for sharing that with us this evening.
Okay, thank you. I don't, can I just share one thing? I don't know, Patty, I'm like, so make sure you show up to the parking lot. Watch our Instagram. We launched Instagram because it's instant. This curiosity thing, I'm putting together a program with a local high school and a robotics team. Cause robotics obviously is the future. And these kids, you talk about curiosity and passion. I feed off of that and they are so excited and they're begging for like, can we come in two times a week and teach classes? And I'm like, I'm handing it over to you because I'm curious, but I know nothing about robotics. So they want to do a demonstration out in the parking lot with what they're submitting to the state for the state championship. And I thought, ah, if we catch a seven year old girl that sees, you know, it's those little things. So yeah, I am very passionate. I could go on and on. I know we have a long night, but I'm always available for any comments, questions.
Right.
No concerns at this point. Wait time in four months.
Right, right. I'll give our Zoom trustees a chance to say anything.
Oh, this is trustee Whitehouse. I'm quite impressed and want to say thank you for being here. I know the voice, the man behind the curtain. But yeah, as, as trustee McDonald suggested or mentioned, curiosity and your passion you bring to it is quite evident. And I'm really excited by you being here. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you. I appreciate that.
Trustee Jerome, got your thing?
I'm excited to see what Ross is going to do in the future. I think that Wellington's always had a nice library, a good library, but it sounds like Ross's passion and enthusiasm are going to bring our library to a whole new level. And it's probably going to be better than any other library within the region. And that even goes up against Fort Collins libraries because I think just from the sounds of it, he's got a lot of good ideas that I think will only be able to be accomplished in a library of this size, but will have huge ramifications for its customers. So I'm excited to see what he pulls off. So congratulations on your being on board, Ross, and we look forward to great things out of you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The challenge is on. Now I'm really sweating.
Well, Ross, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
As you know, this library gets used really a lot by this small town. The summer reading clubs, the book clubs, the resources we give to citizens that don't have computers and internet at home. And you're seeing it all and you're going to get a chance to really help them make it a lot better. So we're looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
I'm going to ask one request. I'm putting a lot of programs together for kids. I know many of you have kids. I expect you to do it with them as well. Thank you.
So I just wanted to take a moment and let you know that this, I appreciate Dean and Ross being here tonight. This is the caliber of talent that Wellington is, is grabbing on to. And I appreciate the, the board of trustees for approving the personnel budget that we presented to you because it was bigger and it was, we were, we were dreaming big when we were talking about hiring a Parks and Recreation Manager and, you know, a library director. And this, and it continues. We have some civil engineers that we just recently retained, which the, it's huge. I mean, these guys come with great municipal backgrounds and Wellington has not seen that in the past. You know, they've, they've gotten the, I don't want to say the bottom of the barrel, but those that, you know, maybe had worked two or three interviews in deep for somebody else and, you know, just could not get the hire. So we're getting, we're getting the top talent and that is attributed a lot to you all for allowing us to have the funds in order to try to, you know, grab that good talent. So I think it's going to pay off in the long run and I'm really excited for what the town has to, to bring over the next couple of years for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on. Presentations are over there. Excellent. Item C is the consent agenda February 9th, 2021. There any issues with this consent agenda tonight that we need to know about?
One request if possible. I guess I shouldn't talk into the microphone. It's not a major issue, but if on page nine, I believe it was, trustee Gator stated that he won't be going further than that because the document is not public yet. If we could just add to that, I was asked not to. I did intend to, but I was asked not to go any further. If we just add that to the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Other items? All right, we'll make that correction. That being said, can I get a motion to approve the February 9th, 2021 consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Call please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, action items. D1, this is a wastewater treatment plant expansion and update in the CMR delivery method presentation by Mr. Meyer. Dave?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to figure out this new platform. One moment. And, okay, now let me try to share a screen. One moment, please. Okay, you should be seeing a mostly blue screen right now. I'll, I'll start. So good evening, mayor and members of the board. This is Dave Meyer, staff engineer. Tonight we have a presentation on Wellington's wastewater treatment plant, the expansion project. There are four items on the presentation. We'll begin with a project overview, followed by an update on our contractor selection. We'll briefly cover what the next steps will be and we'll conclude with a description of the CMAR delivery method, which is what we're implementing for this project. There's no decisions being asked of the board tonight. This is just a presentation supported here by Bob, Bob Gowing and Mike Flores. And I'm sure we will be able to answer any of your questions at the end of this presentation. So let's start with a project overview. This first slide defines the phases, if you will, of the history of our water treatment plant. So phase one in purple here shows the plant's original construction in 2003. Phase two, also shown in purple, shows the portions of the 2016 expansion, which entailed two clarifiers, third ring on this orbital erosion basin and a couple of extra digester tanks. The items with the current expansion, within the current expansion are shown in, shown in these teal colors. Again, identified in the master plan. Future expansions and areas for future expansions are in gray and red. Other more big picture items that we wanted to chat with you quickly about tonight are bulleted on this slide. This time I'm going to turn the mic over to Bob so he can address, address these points. Bob, can, can you take it from here?
Sure. Well, Dave didn't mention this, but we're, we're apologetic for bringing down the mood of the, of the meeting.
Yeah.
That was some pretty nice, nice base to work from and we're just going to present a bunch of dry material. So apologies in advance for that. So it's just a little bit of background and a lot of this was documented in the master plan. This is a real quick reminder. The, the original plant was built in 2004 and the capacity that was about a half million gallons per day in MGD. The phase two expansion, so we're calling that phase one. Phase two happened in 2016 and that basically doubled the capacity of the plant to 0.9 MGD. This expansion that we're talking about today is phase three. And we're going to double the, so my camera just went out for some reason. Double the capacity again to 1.8 MGD. And then phase four, which is a future phase, will add another 0.9 to take it to about 2.7 MGD at that point. So as part of the master plan, we really wanted to plan around all the expansion from here out to an ultimate population of about 35,000 people. And that's, that's what we did. And we basically took the difference between where we're at now with roughly 11 and we're going to be with 35,000 and split it in half into two phases. And so that we can design this phase with the future expansion in mind. We're designing for that. You saw the, the, the blocks on the site plan that Dave just saw and identifies phase three, again, our current phase and the future phase, phase four. So that's just kind of it in a nutshell in terms of how we got here. Obviously with population demand, the demand for sewer treatment and otherwise the amount of flow that we receive down at the wastewater plant goes up roughly proportional to population. And so almost everything we're talking about is, is integral to growth and the question of growth. So we have planned for that kind of ultimate growth. And we know that we need to get moving on phase three right now because we're at capacity. We're, we're not exceeding capacity yet, but we're at the level of capacity where we're required by state law to begin design, which we've done and move it into construction as well. So we've also got kind of an increased regulatory environment. I won't go through those, but when you, when you go above 1.0 MGD, the regulators kind of start to ratchet down on you and you have to do more. They regulate bigger plants to basically a higher standard than smaller plants because the potential damage to the environment is higher. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dave.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Continuing on with, with project overview, this, this slide, you've seen this before. I thought I would bring it up one more time real quick here. This displays some of the limitations of the existing plant that were identified in the master plan. Most of these limitations on the existing plan, as Bob mentioned, are, are capacity shortfalls. There was also operation and maintenance issues and operator safety concerns. For instance, there are some significant safety issues and hazards that the operators face almost daily in this RASWAS building. One other quick thing here, the, the, the biggest and most costly upgrade that's needed right now in this phase is our upgrades or, or a new headworks building. And that's building, building, building right here. The current building is at capacity. Its equipment is aged and reaches operational lifespan. This last slide updates everyone on the design schedule. We, as you remember, we initiated design with Jacobs before the holidays. And we had our 10% design meeting last week that went very well. Conceptual design report was issued with that, a picture of it here that's being reviewed by staff. We are, we are forging ahead with weekly design meetings and also our wastewater utility plan, which is a requirement for the expansion. We anticipate 90 and 100% designs completed by December and, and January of, of next year. And to remind everybody, construction is slated to begin in May of 2022. And with completion of January 24, January of 2024. That's ahead of the Water Treatment Plant Commissioning, which is scheduled for 2024 in the spring. It's critical for the wastewater plant to be online prior to the startup of, of, of the new water treatment plant. So this is a very, very scheduled, intense driven project. Our, our next slide here is to update the board on, on the contractor selection process that, that we've gone through. If you, you recall from previous board meetings, we are, we are employing the CMAR project delivery method. And we issued an RFP for contractors last November. But more on CMAR later. But at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mike Flores, who will briefly explain, you know, the process we went through and inform you on the committee's decisions. Mike, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor and the board members. So the process that we went through was pretty intensive. We started with a committee of eight town staff members and one representative from Jacobs to go through the five proposals that, that we had received back in December. From there, we cut it down to our three finalists. And then we confirmed a second committee of six town members with an additional member from the Jacobs staff. We did numerous interviews. We did site visits. We did extra interviews, you name it. We went through a very long and dedicated process to find the top contractor for our town. When it was all said and done, it was not an easy choice, but the town teamed unanimously picked Mols Construction out of Windsor to be our CMAR. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dave.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mike. Moving on, our, our next slide here just updates everybody on our, on our next steps. We're currently in contract negotiations with Mols. Ideally, we like to have them under contract and onboard before we reach 30% in, in or about, sorry, in or about March. We'll be working with Brad on the CMAR contract. In fact, we already sent him a prelim draft for his prelim approval and, and hoping to bring that, the contract to the board for a decision on March 9th or the 23rd. That is to formally hire Mols as our CMAR contractor. Other than that, we'll, we'll be moving forward with our design meetings weekly with Jacobs and, and Mols. We'll be onboard with that as well and providing the board with project updates on the 30, 60, 90, 100% design levels. This next slide, I, I wanted to show the slide. It illustrates our, our latest site plan, which is different from the earlier versions you've seen. This was produced by the design team representing about our 10% design level. So slightly different from the previous one I showed you. It shows the expanded treatment facilities in blue now and preliminary piping layouts in green. The pink areas here are, are, are areas reserved for future expansions. One point of clarification, circling back on, on something that came up during a previous board meeting. Details of, of the floor plan of this new admin building here are, are still being flushed out. This existing building here, although it's, you know, it's called the admin building, that's rather a misnomer, a mislabeling of the building, if you will. The majority of that floor space in this building is used by the UV system and, and the laboratory. Laboratory, we're, we're planning on enlarging during the project. Only a single bathroom and a shower for all the operators. So we got crammed off of spaces with staff members compressed into a single room. No, no spaces for lunches, eating facilities. That raises some serious sanitary issues with the workers in direct contact with, with rough sewage. Lack of space for PPE lockers and things like that. So those issues and safety code issues. So, those issues and safety code issues will be remedied, you know, with this new building. So, now, moving on to the C-MAR project delivery method. My intention here is to hit the highlights of this and open it up for questions at the end of the conclusion. C-MAR presentation could take an hour. But I'm joined here by Steve Tamborini, a design engineer from Jacobs, and John Tucker from Mols. I believe they're onboard here. Cristo, if you can give them the rights to speak here if they're needed, I appreciate that. One of us should be able to respond to any questions you have. So, if you Google C-MAR, you'll get this definition. It's a project delivery method where the contractor comes onboard during design and delivers what's called the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, for construction of the project. And that GMP is based on construction drawings, specifications at the time of the GMP. We'll get back to C-MAR momentarily, but I thought we'd take a quick look at a couple of the more traditional project delivery methods. Two of those are design, bid, build, and the design-build method. So, the design, bid, build is probably the most more traditional delivery method. This is where we would hire an engineer to produce the design documents, drawings and specs, then actually bid out the construction to contractors. The diagram in the center here shows the contractual relationship between the owner, the engineer, and the contractor. In this case, we would have a contract with the engineer and the contractor. I listed some advantages and disadvantages of this method that you can check out. Probably the biggest advantage is that this method is, you know, very well understood, has been used for decades. Disadvantages, I've listed several here, but most importantly being the fact that there's little to no collaboration between the designer and contractor. The construction is bid out based on drawings and specs. That's essentially the first time the contractor sees the project. And bids are usually awarded to lowest qualified bidder, which can be subject to omissions errors that could result in change orders. The other delivery method that's been used in the past is design-build. This is where the contractor comes onboard early in the game. The diagram shows the contractual relationship between the owner and the designer slash builder. In this case, we would have one contract, usually with the contractor. And then the contractor would hire the engineer. The advantages to this are, you know, we have a single point of contract and a single contract along with potential cost savings through design innovation and a competitive procurement. So, we identify what sort of project we want. We put it out to bid to design-bid teams and evaluate qualifications and project approaches and costs within the proposals we get. Common disadvantages include reduced opportunity for the owner to collaborate with the design. Also, the evaluations of proposals can be very time-consuming and complex. But, you know, just by the way, every project delivery method out there, be it C-MAR or these two here, many others that are out there, have pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages. There's really no perfect method out there. It's more of a case of fitting the right delivery method to the project. And speaking of that, we finally get back to C-MAR, which is basically a hybrid between design-bid-build and the design-build. And the diagram in the middle now shows the contractual relationship back to the exact same that I showed you for the design-bid-build method. Again, we are contract with an engineer and contract with a contractor. Disadvantages and advantages listed here. Most of the cases, most of these cases, these advantages far outweigh any of the disadvantages. The contractor being onboard early in the game is a huge advantage with the selection of the contractor, as Mike just spoke to, being qualifications-based and to an extent based on price when we examine things like their profit and overhead margins, pre-construction services. Bringing the contractor during design does, however, add some additional cost for what's called their pre-construction services. But these are relatively small costs compared with the overall project. The next slide here talks about the timing of the C-MAR method and cost association with it and the GMP, as I mentioned. And this slide also describes where the word risk comes into play under construction manager at risk. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bob to chat a bit about the GMP and how those risks are mainly assumed by the contractor. Bob?
Thanks, Dave. The management of risk is a huge part of any project for an owner, especially on a 30 or $40 million project. So, in terms of timing, I think really to kind of narrow it down a little bit, the design process using the C-MAR delivery method, it's typically gonna be a little bit longer. And that's because there's built-in cost estimates that the C-MAR provides that provides feedback to the engineer and the owner during the design process so that we can build value engineering into it instead of waiting until after you've bid it out and awarded it to a contractor. So, that alone mitigates a lot of risk for us, for the owner. I think construction typically will go a little bit faster because the contractor's been onboard since at least the 30%, and they've seen the plans evolve. They're much more intimate, if I can use that word, with the design plans. And they're already rolling. They can be thinking about long-lead item equipment purchases. They can be thinking about how their company is gonna get geared up for the project, and they don't have to wait until the bids are open to say, oh, I got this project, right? They can build it into their schedule. So, that timing risk, a lot of timing risk is mitigated as well. Construction phasing risk is mitigated for us again because the contractor's been involved. The engineer's been hearing from the contractor and from the owner. We have to operate this plant while it's under construction. So, all of those things are wonderful things for the owner and the entire design team and construction team. But in particular with, you know, related to the GMP, at some point in the design process, the owner will ask the C-MAR for a guaranteed maximum price, and that would be based on the construction documents that are prepared at that time. The owner and the designer and the C-MAR can talk about what is the appropriate contingency. And we're all kind of on the same page in terms of where the risk is in terms of estimating early for that project. So, that GMP can be developed at any stage of the project. 60% seems to be the most typical. It could certainly happen at 90% or even later. But the key is to think about those long-lead items. And if you need to get that stuff ordered quickly, 60% tends to be the kind of the average for that. So, I would ask John, John is with Mols, and they haven't officially been selected yet because the board hasn't approved their contract. But we did invite them to this meeting so that they could say a few words if they wanted to. John?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wonderful. That's actually, that's one of the better presentations on C-MAR that I've heard. I do like the contract method. It really does bring collaboration and bring everybody in as a team and work in a team environment to get the project built. I do believe that it makes it so that you can get projects on budget. The 30, 60, and 90% bringing us in to actually bid it. I believe you can actually believe those estimates a lot better than as you're going through and then end up at the end, a lot of times, in the bid-build projects with a large dollar, and you have to start cutting, and then you have redesign fees. So, just the collaboration in this forum. Mols has been doing C-MAR on the front range for over 20 years, and I really do like it. It seems to be more popular, and it seems to be the way a lot of municipalities are going just because of that.
Dave might be covering this later in the presentation. Apologies, Dave, if I'm jumping ahead. But you could also think of a C-MAR delivery method is like a fixed fee plus a profit, basically. And one of the things that most owners love about the C-MAR process, the books are open to us. We see what the contractor's expenses are, we see their labor expenses. We see everything that we want to see about that. And then there's just kind of a built-in overhead or profit on top of that. And that's the fee that goes on top of the fixed expenses that they're gonna have with the project. So, that open-book nature of the C-MAR process is very helpful when we get into construction, and changes will happen. We're gonna find things out there that we didn't know existed. That happens on every project. Well, we know, we know how John, how our contractor, our C-MAR approached the pricing of the project. We know what those unit costs are. We know everything that we need to know to make the best decision possible about how to move forward. And that really applies to every step of the project, all the way from 30% to startup on the project. So, I think I'll probably go ahead and turn it back over to Dave now.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Thanks. Thanks, John. A couple more slides here for everybody. Just a few more closing points about C-MAR. So, again, the contractor comes onboard during design, and that's known as the pre-construction services, which will be part of the contract and fees. And the dollar amounts for those services will be identified. The GMP is issued near the completion of the design, usually, minimizing the occurrence of change orders. Bob kind of spoke to this, where the contractor would have various contingencies built into the GMP that would be agreed upon by the owner for things like dewatering, equipment, materials purchases, things of that nature. The idea being that any change orders would be accounted for in the GMP. Contractor selection is based on qualifications. And as I mentioned, to a certain extent, contractor fees and profits for overhead and things like that, and pre-construction services. The GMP is indeed a not-to-exceed cost. And that number is developed between the owner and the contractor and the engineer. Using an open-book approach, we get to see all the numbers. GMP is the maximum price. All subcontractors, vendors, equipment costs are included in that GMP. Using the C-MAR approach, projects along the front range have commonly come in under budget, and scope items are being able to be added. All of the better contractors in the area are going after and winning projects that are used in the C-MAR approach. The C-MAR method has been the predominant delivery method used along the front range. Loveland, Windsor, Parker, Solcher Canyon, South Fort Collins, and Fort Collins have been using this for years and years. And there's a reason why this is so popular. And finally, C-MAR is not new to Wellington. In fact, Wellington was actually a pioneer of this approach with our original wastewater treatment plant construction in 2003. Back then, Wellington, and we had hydroconstruction onboard for that. We referred to it as a design-build partnering. Wellington then successfully used C-MAR for other projects such as the 2016 expansion and the ongoing water treatment plant. So, these are not uncharted waters for the town. So, in conclusion, you know, staff feels that the C-MAR delivery method is an excellent choice for our expansion from a time, collaboration, cost savings perspective. The owner gets its best bang for its buck. Contractors really like it. It avoids the messiness of bidding and the unknowns and change orders. Less risk for everyone, owner, engineer, contractor, all involved in the process. With that, thank you so much for your attention, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Trustees, you got any questions regarding the C-MAR process from Dave?
I have one. Has Mols and Jacobs successfully completed C-MAR projects together in the past?
The answer is yes. I'm gonna let Steve Tamborini speak to that. I believe he's onboard. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have done, we have done multiple projects in the past with Mols on projects across Colorado, really. So, we've done other methodology projects with Mols as well. So, the two of us have worked together on projects, for sure.
Good. Okay. I just was wondering, because I know that with this type of approach, it's to everybody's advantage if there's already some type of working relationship between the two firms. That way, they already know how to interact with each other, and there's less of a learning curve, you know, going through the process so they can stay on task and not have to learn about each other's, how they operate. So, it's good to hear that they've worked together in the past. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fantastic presentation. Thank you very much. It was a good presentation. I like the C-MAR process. I do have some concerns about the contractor. I received a complaint regarding a facility that they worked on recently that I'd like to tour and receive some more information about before I'm comfortable making a decision. I'd also like to ask that if the selection committee has any of their review documentation available, I'd like to review that as well before making a selection on that contractor.
Yeah, I could speak to that. I'm not too sure who's speaking. Is that?
Trustee McDonald.
Trustee McDonald, thank you. I could certainly present that in the board package, the decision matrix that we put together to select Mols and include that in the package. As far as the issue with Mols, I can look more into that and talk with the contractor and get some more specifics on that to answer that question for you.
Thank you. We'll work with staff.
Yeah, right.
Get my questions answered, and I'll also ask Patty to share that information with the board.
Right. Okay, because right now, we're just reviewing it. We're not making a decision, so. Anything else? Okay, the one key, yep?
Yeah. And so, this is, I don't have an issue with the C-MAR or contractor. At this point, I would love to get that information once available. I do have a, more of just a general concern is I know we, I guess the question I have is are we required to make the expansion to 1.8 to fulfill the state requirements? And I don't need this answer now. But just the concern is, is we're still in the middle of huge water rate hikes. And again, if we're talking a 30, 40, 30 to $40 million project here, is it possible for us to push some of those things onto the Phase Four so we're not hitting our citizens with as big of an increase? Because we're already dealing with a large water increase, and we're gonna see a similar increase within the next couple of years, most likely, to the wastewater to handle these contracts. So, is it possible to push some of what is being proposed into Phase Three into Phase Four? So, we're spreading that hit to the citizens out more because we're already being hit for water. So, that's just more of a general concern that I have with the project as a whole.
See, Gator, I can offer a partial answer to that. We're, that's already occurred to us that that's something that would be beneficial for the community. Obviously, wastewater treatment and water treatment's not inexpensive, and we understand that. So, we're looking at that pretty hard right now at the, between the 10 and the 30% phase to identify some items that we might be able to push. The hard part of that is that ideally, you would want your wastewater capacity to coincide with the water plant capacity. And because of the explosive growth that we've had over the past 10 years, averaging roughly 6%, I think when you listen to the timeline about how we got here, our last expansion was only really five years ago of the wastewater plant. And it was a fairly large expansion. And we've already used that capacity up as a function of the really extremely high growth rate that Wellington's experienced over the last decade. So, you can't run the water plant without having corresponding capacity in the wastewater plant. You almost need to think of them as two halves to one system. And so, there's no point in building in additional capacity in the water side if you don't have, if you don't have the ability to treat because you won't be able to use that until that capacity is built in. So, it is important to roughly have those capacities equivalent because you obviously don't want to invest in extra capacity now when you can't use it, right? So, you would plan that for the future. And so, by roughly... And so by roughly basically doubling our current capacity, we feel like that's an appropriate amount of expansion based on kind of historic growth in Wellington, but also the fact that we, we really don't want to come back to the well anytime in the next ten to twenty years with an additional expansion. So that's a long answer to your question, but the the shorter answer is that we we are very cognizant of that and we're we're thinking about that in every, every meeting that we go to on this project.
Zoom trustees, do you have anything?
Just kind of a comment to follow up with trustee Gators. And I know that Bob Gowing was not here, neither was Dave back in twenty sixteen, but I had heard that some of the reasons they did some shortcuts on that last expansion to come in at a better budget, which has kind of put us in the position we are now. Is that kind of have some water to hold there, Bob? Or is that something I heard that's not correct?
No, you heard that right. There were quite a lot of those things and those kind of things always come back on you, right? If you, if you, if you don't design it right and you don't pick the right pumps and all those kinds of things, then that's going to come back on you. And that's resulted in really a three year crash course on really upgrading some of the existing parts of that plant so that we can continue to function until the expansion is there. And of course, parts of this plan are being reused with the expansion as well. So probably not worthwhile going into the gory details on what those, what those decisions were, but we experience that really throughout all the infrastructure systems in this town. And that's not to point fingers. I think that that folks did the best job they could with the limited budgets they had back then, but we're growing town and we're a little bit different in terms of how we approach things now.
Thank you.
This is trustee Whitehouse. I think some great questions or great answers to some not necessarily simple questions. I have to say this presentation and all the presentations as part of this project, I've been they've been very clear. They're well run, very professional and it I think it speaks to the department about the increasing levels of I guess, capacity competency, but you know, again, things will happen down the road, but I I think you guys are, I'm impressed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one final comment. And what I heard was we would have that GMP at ninety percent, but we might know about what that GMP is at sixty percent. I can't tell you how important that is as we go through this process. No big surprises. So as we go through, we'll be looking for that.
Mayor, you'll see the thirty percent cost estimate on this. The whole board will see the thirty percent. And we're gonna, it's our goal to be much more transparent on this kind of thing than perhaps has happened in the past.
Well, I appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else further from the board, then I have to open this up to the public for comment because it's on the action list. So we'll open it up. This is regarding the C Mar process.
Christine Gator, eighty one thirty two Fourth Street. If we could just, once the contract comes to you guys, if we could get an estimate of how much that would increase our sewer base rate. And that's easy to find if you have the amount minus the the tap fees divided by the years that you're getting the loan divided by the number of users divided by twelve. So if we could get that so that we
We'll do our best. I'm sure there's going to be quite a bit of study on that. And there's going to be other ways of looking to finance this thing. I'm not so sure we know all of those kind of answers.
Okay, well, just an estimate would be great.
But we'll try. But this is about the C Mar process. Okay. Anyone else, Crystal, see anyone?
Mayor, I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. We'll close the meeting. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Move on to item two. This is a conditional use for the human being drive-through C one community commercial zone district, Cody Byrd.
Good evening, Mayor and Board members. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. This next item, the presentation is pretty short. You've got a staff report in your packet that's explaining that the town staff had advertised a public hearing for tonight's meeting for the human being drive-through coffee shop request for a conditional use. And when this, when the town staff advertises these public hearings, we advertise both the planning commission public hearing and the Board of Trustees' public hearing. When the planning commission heard this at the first of the month, there was still some additional information that was needed regarding the traffic engineering. And so the the planning commission had requested to table that item into a later date. And so they did not form a recommendation to pass on to the Board of Trustees. And so we felt it was it was prudent and it was typical for the board to wait for that advisory body to provide their recommendation. So the recommendation for tonight is to table the public hearing to the March ninth Board of Trustees' meeting.
Any questions about that? It's about table. Okay.
I'm waiting for to see if anyone else goes first. Okay. So I understand the desire to table. I've had several conversations with town staff. Unfortunately, at this time, I do not feel that I, as a board member, have enough information to actually make a decision because I've only been presented the information necessary to make a decision to table. I think that's an issue with process. I think with talking to town staff, I, we found a solution that can fix that. But just based on the process of doing this, I'm not comfortable making a decision. So I will be abstaining from the vote tonight because I do not feel I have the decision, the information necessary to actually make a good decision.
If I can respond somewhat to that. Justy Gator and I did have some discussion. Brad Marge, Town Attorney. We did have discussion surrounding his concerns, which I think in part are centered on, we have a meeting that has been published for the public. They have an expectation that someone, the presentation will be made. And staff is unilaterally suggesting that there be a, that this matter be tabled based on issues with the planning board. The suggestion that was made to resolve this, and if with the board's approval, what I'd like to do suggest is that we put together a policy that simply says that in the event the board does not have a planning recommendation, then the matter will be tabled. The result of that would presumably be that the board doesn't have to deal with this. The concern would be that otherwise, if the board concludes that we ought to have a package because something has to go on the agenda because it's been published, which is the norm. We can't ignore it. Are we going to publish all over again? It slows down the development process, which the board has made clear they don't want to do. If we can avoid it, what we would do as we're proposing tonight is to table the matter. That allows it to get up on the agenda quicker. It saves money. The alternative would be we not know for sure that we're going to table the matter. Mr. Byrd would have to put together a planning package with information that we didn't change and we're wasting his time. If we put a policy together that says it will be tabled, that seems like it would solve the problem. So with the board's approval, I'd present that probably at the next meeting or following meeting, just a general policy. Thoughts?
I have a question out of curiosity.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny and Mayor Hammond, you two serve on the planning commission?
Yes.
Correct. Can you share some information about the discussion, why the planning commission can't provide a recommendation on this?
You want to take the first stab at it?
Yeah, sure. So there are some significant concerns on traffic patterns associated with the location. The we received a presentation of some information from their traffic engineers stating that it was satisfactory. Yet their site plans didn't comply with those recommendations. Our ask of the applicant was then to provide new site plans that provided that same feedback with that traffic feedback from their engineers within those site plans to review. We could not make a decision without those site plans available. That's the basic level of it. There were a lot of other discussions and concerns that will still be applicable when we receive those new site plans. But essentially, we don't have the site plans to approve and therefore couldn't make a decision. And that's why the planning commission made the recommendation for tabling as well as the staff. But I do want to make sure that we recognize that 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 suggestion for tabling also came from the planning commission.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Tim Whitehouse here, trustee Whitehouse. I also was the impression this was a question I was going to direct to Mr. Byrd is that my understanding was the traffic impact study was not available or quite complete, or whether staff had a chance to review it. Mr. Byrd, could you, you've been directly involved in this. Could you, can you address this, please?
Yeah, thanks, trustee Whitehouse. So at the, at the time of the planning commission meeting, the information that that our staff was reviewing was mostly complete. What was missing was the the applicant's traffic engineers were making suggestions that Sixth Street be restriped to a different, and I say restriping, I mean, the the lane markings would be reconfigured to a different arrangement to accommodate traffic onto and off of the site. They made that recommendation or suggestion without showing what it would look like. And so to date, we're still communicating with the applicant's traffic engineers to have them provide what the new site plan arrangement and what that traffic the striping plan would look like on Sixth Street. So as of right now, we do not have a complete traffic impact study and site plan that corresponds to that to evaluate if that site suggestion that they made at the planning commission meeting would work. So we're still working through that process currently.
That's pretty much it in a nutshell. There wasn't enough information for the entire board to be, you know, satisfied.
I understand why we're tabling or considering tabling.
Right, considering table. So we get that.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But the issue you're bringing up here is starting to set a policy. Yeah, it just seems logical. Certainly, the board could proceed and could approve this project. You wouldn't want to do that without your planning commission board in most cases and getting their approval, although they're an advisory board. That being said, it seemed logical to create a policy that says you won't do that. You can always override your policy. But that then explains it and it seems to me trustee Gator's concerned.
I can, and that would address my concern because my concern is not the tabling. I don't have a problem with tabling the item. Where I have a concern is that, we talked about this last night, is the role of what does the board do? What does the staff do? And what this would do is the board would implement a policy that says the planning commission didn't approve it, we table it. Where in this case, not, it's nothing done wrong, but staff has in essence said that because we have been provided no documentation. So trustee McDonald, myself, trustee McNutson, Mayor Protam McNutson, who are not in the planning commission, have no information about this project at all. So we don't know whether to say yes or no. We only have staff's recommendations. So in essence, staff has more or less said the decision is to table. But by putting this policy in place, we are setting that policy. So it's us following our own policy. So then it's fine for staff not to include things to say, we're going based on board policy. For me, that would totally fix the issue.
Yeah, it eliminates the necessity to put it on this meeting here. I think it's a one liner. We could have it to you by next meeting. What do you think? What do you guys think? It's changing the way we've done things.
I'd like to see it.
Of course.
Yeah. More detail as to how the commission. I guess I don't quite understand.
What's happening here is
tables it, then we automatically table it.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to table or not table, you know, we're gonna do that. But what, what being introduced here
Right. Well, I think it's a point of order situation. So
It is.
The the item on the agenda is to table the or discuss tabling the public hearing. But I would be open for bringing this up in other for providing direction to staff if we want to.
No, I, I, no, and that's the way we need to proceed. It just kind of jumped ahead. We were going to look at reports later.
Yeah, I was going to write up in reports, but anyway.
But I think, can we do that? Yeah, great. All right.
Okay.
I'll see that saves.
Right.
Time and I think was a better expectation for applicants.
All right, then. We won't, I don't, I don't know that I need to open this to public. We're just going to go to motion to table, right? Okay, can I get a motion to table? The conditional use for the human being drive-through in C one community commercial zone till March ninth, twenty twenty one.
Trustee McDonald, so motion?
Second.
Call please.
Trustee Gator.
Abstain.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protam McNutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay. Let's move on. Item three. This is the ordinance, zero one dash twenty twenty one. It's an emergency ordinance amending the municipal code to allow water dedications to be treated as an appertinent to you're going to have to say that.
Appertain.
Appertain. To lots. Yes, you got to explain what that all means. I will do so. All right. Mr. Mayor and Board, this is Brad Marge again, Town Attorney's Office. The issue or an issue has been raised. The the town board has encouraged contributions of raw water, which was a change of past efforts where they would allow raw water to be satisfied by paying cash in lieu of payments based upon the increases in raw water costs. The board had some shift in policy within the last year and a half, urging developers to bring water to the table. Water has been difficult to come by. It's become more and more expensive. And what the board has tried to encourage is having shares contributed. The concern that that's given rise to is if the cost of that water has gone up. When a developer buys, for example, North Pooter shares, which is a predominant water source, that those North Pooter shares will provide for multiple units. The developer will generally turn those units in and take credits. The problem is, is when the developer buys water, he usually won't be able to buy a single share of stock. He'll buy a block of shares and by way of just making life less complicated, that entire block of shares that the developer purchased for what may be a fairly large subdivision will be turned in all at once as opposed to share by share. The result of that is, is that there's a large investment that is now sitting with the town. The town does not want to give that back. The developer is trying to finance their project and they have a substantial investment that's tied up in what's been contributed. Traditionally, what would happen is it would then go get a tap and the tap would be attached to or a pertinent to the land which is being developed. So that lot would maybe have a tap on it. But that takes some time to develop. And so as an example, as I said in my report, if you buy ten shares of water, because that was available at two hundred thousand dollars a share, that's two million dollars worth of water that's sitting out, contributed to the town's water bank and the developer can't borrow against that. And so one of the things that's been requested is that the developer be allowed to contribute that and attach that water to specific lots because then they can go back to their lender and they can get the lender to give them a loan on that lot inclusive of the water. There's really no other way to get a lien against that water that they've contributed because the town doesn't want to give a lien against the shares because in the town's name, we don't want to sacrifice those. So what we would do is it would be essentially as if we had, we had issued a tap for that lot. But when we ask for a tap, we have to actually tap the supply meeting. And that doesn't happen until a building permit is pulled. And so this just allows the contribution and treating the waters attached to the lot before an actual tap is issued. And that's the intention of this ordinance. I would point out, and I apologize, we made changes late Friday. I tried to send materials around to the board. There was one error in my whereas clauses. I believe it's the fourth one, fifth one, maybe, fourth one. It had previously said the cost of water has risen and availability of raw water has increased. I was supposed to say demand for raw water has increased. And if, my apologies for that. I just had added something else to that provision and it didn't get changed. That's my fault. But that's the gist of the ordinance we're doing. Happy to interject any questions. Questions, trustees?
This is trustee House. I have a question, Mr. Mar. I mean, this does sound like a good idea. It's sort of normal and customary. And did this request come from is this something coming out of conversations with the developers in our community?
I don't know that it is normal and customary. I, I, I don't know that it's not customary. The it did, the request came from a developer's lender. And that developed, there had been a fairly large contribution of water. And the lender was concerned that what they would normally do would take a security interest against specific lots. And their And their concern further was, was that what they were loaning on was a lot with a tap. And so what, again, the further concern was, was until the tap was issued, which had often meant the house, a house was contracted for, until the tap was issued, they couldn't get a lien against this water. The town owns the water right now because it's been contributed to us. The developer will get credits. The only way we could come up, and, and I have to say it's customary, the way I have seen it done in the past, uh, trustee Whitehouse, um, and I, I would cite the Milliken in particular, uh, we ran into a problem with that. The, what will happen is that the developer will contribute the water and then what will happen is they'll issue water certificates. And, and when I build on a house, I take that water certificate in, I turn it into the town. And having turned it into the town, I'm now entitled, I, I can use that against my raw water requirement. The problem with that is, is it, it's gonna, it created a Milliken and I think will create for us a very difficult tracking system because suddenly we have these certificates out there. The bank is going to feel it has lien against their certificates. I don't know if they're leanable. Um, if there is a foreclosure, you're sitting in a position that you have, the lender foreclosed on the lots. Did they get the certificates? You get, you get owners who come out of the woodwork with these certificates. It, it, it was nightmarish in the circumstance that we were involved in it. So this seemed to be a better answer, um, with less bookkeeping for the town to allow us to solve this problem.
Do I have a question?
Yes, please.
So the certificates, are they, are you saying that they'd be recorded against the property?
We did not, I, we're not recommending we issue certificates. What we are recommending, i- i- the, the gist of what this would do is a developer could come in and say, I want these certificates, um, treated as if they're attached to this specific lot or lots.
Right.
Having done that, there is no certificate issued. The town, that we, we issue a letter saying this, this certificate is now treated as a pertinent. That's what a pertinent means, it's a legal term, meaning that it's attachment to the lot. And so this is now permanently attached to a lot unless the builder comes in and gets town board approval to the contrary and lender approval, which is a process.
Okay, so you're recording this letter against the property?
We're just going to mark it, the, the town is saying it's an appurtenance and we are going to mark it in our books and we're going to issue this letter saying, these are, and that's the purpose of the ordinance, these specific lots have their water requirement satisfied. And, and they then look at the ordinance and they say, this cannot be removed from this lot without approval of the lender and approval of the town board. And at that point, I think it's a pertinent, it is attachment. I've talked to the bank's lender, he's comfortable with doing it that way. Uh, all we have to do effectively, and I, Mr. Bird and I had a fair amount of conversation over this, all the town record keeping would have to do is as it identifies lots, it would, uh, we check off, if you will, the water for this lot is satisfied. I, I think the, the potential of air is multi-times reduce, reduced by doing it this way versus issuing a certificate. And Cody agreed that was true as well. That's the thought, but we would not record anything specifically, we'd just give them the letter. And I think that's all we'd have to do and the lender agreed with that. It may take some tweaking as time goes on, but I think it works.
So this came from the developer's lender?
This came from the developer's lender saying they could not provide financing with the current arrangement. And this was a solution we came up with and proposed back to him to solve the problem with the feeling that we didn't want to slow down development or we wanted to encourage it. We were trying not to impede things.
Okay. Brad, I have a question. What, what, what happens if the lot, if there is foreclosure?
The thought would be, and, and again, I think we've dealt with it, in the event that there was a foreclosure, this water would stay with the foreclosed lot. So there's not a certificate, there's nothing else out there, it's on our records, we've issued a letter to them, there's a foreclosure. Um, maybe, maybe the builder or the, the foreclosing party understands, maybe they don't, that they would foreclose a lot, they either did or did not have water units satisfied. And so, and that would be in our records and our records would be determinative.
So you're setting a precedent for every, everything from here on out?
The, it, we would have to, the town would have to agree that the water units or the units are attached. And so that would go through Mr. Bird's office, he would have to agree that was the case. If they ever wanted to move a lot, there's a mechanism for doing that. Um, the other thing we recognized was that there may be, uh, in the future, an increase in the amount of water that is required, um, to satisfy the water needs for a lot or perhaps they want a larger tap. They have to meet, that water is applied against the lot, but it doesn't satisfy the requirement for that lot. Instead, what it does is it applies against whatever the requirement is at the time they request a building permit.
So I don't, this is, I'll take one this time. Um, I don't feel like I have enough information on this and I'd like to talk to Brad a little further about this. I understand it's an emergency ordinance, but I'd like to recommend that we table this and bring it back because I think trustee Kenny is approaching something that I'm concerned about too with memorializing this, this exception to the rule. So I just want to ask some more questions.
Anything?
Yeah, I mean, you bring up an interesting point about the foreclosure and anything like that. I don't, I don't know how confident you are in all this yet, Brad.
Be confident.
But I'm not.
Okay, and that's fair, you need to be, I don't have to vote. So I, I don't.
What's the point of, what's, what's the problem with having a little pushing it out a little bit more?
Okay, well, the, the effort was to try and accommodate development.
I, I, I think we should because this is subject to a specific lender. Trying to change, we've been doing things for a while now.
Fair enough.
And I haven't heard what the rest of the town is yet.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm not opposed to it, I just want to.
No, I know, it's, we're changing the whole way we do things because trying to accommodate something, I don't know.
Have no objection to that.
So maybe we should just table.
If you're not comfortable, I'd encourage that.
And we need to do it to a date certain?
Well, um, do you, if, does, any, do any other board members say?
Trustee Jerome?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, I know that the Mountain View Estates down on the south end of, of town went through foreclosures and all kinds of legal actions several years ago. Uh, I guess, was there any of this water issue, uh, involved in that that you're aware of, Brad? Uh, because it seems to me that the only thing that really brings this to be more of an issue is the sheer value of a water share, making it a substantial investment. Um, I don't know, you know, I just, it just makes me curious that one lender wants this because of whatever reason and, I mean, they've been building all kinds of houses, as we all know, in different developments in this, in this town for the last ten years, um, you know, exceedingly quicker the last probably three years. And it seems to me that if this was going to be an issue, it would have already developed itself. So, um, kind of to, um, trustee McDonald and, and trustee Kenny's kind of concerns that it sounds like I heard, you know, is this to accommodate one particular lender? Or is it a industry-wide, um, thing of interest right now? That, I guess that's the biggest question because if we're doing this type of thing for one particular, um, lender, I, I, you know, I don't know that that's this board's job or the town of Wellington's responsibility to bend over, uh, to the will of a lender to do something for a developer. That's, you know, that's kind of giving preferential treatment in my mind, which, you know, we should be treating everybody fairly across the board. So if, if, you know, lender A wants this, but lender B doesn't really care about it, well then developer A needs to go to lender B and get his money. So that's only my concerns about it. You know, like I said, and, and the other trustees have alluded to, if it's something that needs to be done, um, I, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it, but I just want to be, you know, very sure that this isn't being, can get, could be construed as preferential treatment to one particular, uh, developer based upon their lending preferences, so.
I, I, if I can just respond to that real quickly, I think it's good for the whole board. Um, that was, that was discussed at some length among staff. That was this something that was, um, somehow preferring unders. Um, initially, uh, Mr. Bird came back and was very reluctant to do this. Um, I would suggest that you're right, over the last ten years, there's been a lot of development. Frankly, the trade ones development, which was Mountain View, um, was thought of pretty, uh, there was a lot of thought that went in surrounding that project, which was foreclosed on. The difference I would suggest, and this is relatively recent, ten years ago, when we were doing these, what would happen was the developer would come in and pay the, the stated cash in lieu of rate relative to that development and they would pull their building permit and that would satisfy the needs for their tap. We've got a relatively new change that's occurred, what with asking for, um, North Pooter shares, uh, which is predominantly, again, what we're using. That developer now, what we're asking them to do is we're going, asking them to go out to the market and we're going, asking them to find those shares, which often are not, that they, they become available on an immediate basis. The developer has to get the funds to buy those. They may be able to get funds from the lender, they may be, and I think this is going to vary from developer to developer. It is not, this is not intended to be developer-specific, but they're going to need to buy their shares on what's a fairly immediate basis. The lender is not going to want them turning the shares into us where there's, well, there's a lien against them and thus they can get a lien against the lot as a substitute with the shares on them. And I think it's going to be a, a much more pervasive problem that as we get larger developments that hit, and what we've largely seen is developers with a fair amount of, with fairly deep pockets. But as we get large developments that hit, I think there's going to be a larger and larger need that specific one developer to finance these water rights if we're going to get them to contribute it to us. That was the thought.
I totally understand the intent of, of what is trying to be accomplished. It is something that's different, so I just think it's, um, a good idea for us to pause.
Couldn't agree more. I, I, I'm not, I wanted to introduce it, I wanted to get out there, we thought there would be questions. We, we were trying to accommodate the policy of doing the water. We were trying to accommodate developer and, and not, not slow down the development process. But I absolutely agree, you guys need to be comfortable with what we're doing. So I don't have any problem at all with you tabling it, I'd love to sit and talk to you.
Brad, thank you for that explanation, it actually makes, uh, more sense to me now. I wasn't, uh, put, I, I forgot that most developers were giving cash in lieu, which is a totally different bird. So when you just throw the money out there, then that's a whole different idea. So thank you for reiterating the explanation, it makes more sense to me now, so. But I'm, um, if trustee Kenny and, and trustee McDonald still have some questions that they need answered, I am comfortable with tabling this or, um, whatever we need to do so that everybody on the board feels comfortable with making whatever decision they ultimately do, so.
Understood. Trustee Kenny, you got some further comment?
Yeah, my, my general opinion on this situation is that we should continue to encourage water sha- shares being contributed to the town and, and make that process friendly to our developers. So that, I believe is the intent of everything that we're talking about right now. But I want to make sure that we do, in my mind, maintain that friendly disposition towards the developers that they can easily and healthily, um, get the financing as required. But with that, at the same time, uh, with that friendliness to developers, we're continuing to restrict building permits. So I want to make sure that that's not taken as a, let's make it as easy as possible, develop as much as Wellington as fast as possible. So I don't want that to be the intent that's derived from what we're trying to accomplish, um, that we are limiting those building permits elsewhere. Um, but I think in general, Wellington being friendly to our partners, who are developers, while getting as much water as possible is the goal. And so I do acknowledge that that's the purpose of what we're trying to do. Um, but I think that we have some more questions, so I think it's good to go up on that.
Trustee Whitehouse, got anything?
I, I had a question, I wonder if I could get, uh, some perspective from Mr. Bird because it sounds like, uh, he was involved in the development of this.
Yeah, this is Cody Bird, Planning Director. Um, and actually, what I was, I turned my video on earlier, but what I was going to bring up was, was brought up by Mr. March and, and Ms. Kenny, our trustee Kenny. Um, but I would just reiterate that we did have some significant changes to our development policies and that we've, we've raised the raw water contribution requirements significantly. Um, we are requiring the developers to bring water shares instead of pay cash, which has been the historic practice. And you couple those things with the desire to limit the number of, of permits to stay within our water treatment capacity over the next couple of years. We put a lot of, uh, constraints on, on builders to do what they do. And we did, we were approached by one lender, uh, on this topic, but I think this is something that could really be applied to, to any developer who is struggling with financing their projects in light of the increasing, uh, constraints that the town has put on them with regards to our raw water policies. Um, so as, as Mr. March alluded to, I did initially push back very hard on this, uh, concept. Um, but once I worked through it and Mr. March and I had, had several conversations about this, uh, I do think it is in the good interest of the, of the town and the community to find a solution that provides some flexibility for development to, to work within the constraints we've put upon them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I think I understand the motive behind the whole thing, I really do, I get it. Uh, but we, we've got questions, but if we've got a little time, why can't we push it off and get further to satisfy those concerns that we're not at risk and we're not doing anything? We, we did put constraints on the developers to come up, uh, jump through some hoops to get something done and I see, like, the banks probably want to know what they got, so. So would we, would the next meeting kill it?
March 9th is fine. And, and I talked to this lender and Ev told him we are making changes to try and accommodate, so I think that's.
Well, let's go ahead and entertain the motion. You want to do it?
Um, would you like to open it to the public?
No.
No?
Well, no, we're, we're tabling it, yeah.
March 9th? Is that correct? I'll make a motion that we table ordinance number zero one twenty twenty one and emergency ordinance amending the municipal code to allow water dedications to be treated as a pertinent to lots to the March 9th regular board meeting.
Second.
And we want a second? Okay, we'll take a roll call.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Brad. We look forward to getting some information so we can resolve this thing and get the public input, okay?
Thank you.
Um, next one, we're going to move on to item four, resolution number seven dash twenty twenty one. This is a resolution confirming the appointment of municipal court clerk.
This is, this is Brad March again. Uh, this is a housekeeping measure. Um, one of the things that the code require, the state statute would require that the municipal judge appoint her clerk. Um, our, and we have a municipal judge who I can't sing her praises enough for. Um, we had, this is this, in changing clerks, we had a court clerk who, um, had more tenure than I. Uh, Carol dated back, she was actually the clerk for the town for a while. Um, she served for probably a good thirty years. Um, and her, she was amazing, but her mechanisms, as all of us who have gotten older, are, were a little antiquated. She used a program called WordStar, which was, um, I think probably one of the earliest DOS-based programs that the world um, saw, and he was just, she retired and Crystal Smith took her position. Uh, Crystal did an absolutely wonderful job. Um, because of, um, restructuring, Crystal's part-time position, I gather, has been phased out. They're, they're looking at, um, and so we've had to find someone else to serve as clerk. Uh, Michelle Souter, um, is taking that position on. What the code provides is the judge appoints the clerk, town code does, the statute does. But our town code also has a provision from years gone by that the town board also. that the town board also appoints the clerk. We've taken that as a formate. Crystal Smith was appointed previously. She's tendered a resignation based upon the circumstances. And so what we're asking the board to do is to confirm the appointment of Michelle Sauter. The judge has already appointed her to satisfy her side of this obligation. So we just need the board to confirm this.
Any questions from Brad?
This is the only question I have, and I don't know if this will be for you or someone else. If you could just give us a little bit of information on why we feel Michelle would do a good job with that position.
Yeah, that is one that I, I, I have met Michelle. I think Michelle will be very competent. I don't do the appointment, obviously, I get to be the prosecutor. I, I think both the judge and I have relied on the staff's, you know, and she works in town hall now. I, I know that the clerk spends a fair amount of time with her, and Crystal may be able to comment on it, but we met with the town clerk, Michelle and I, and I felt, and my paralegal, who does most of the court work, I felt that she was going to be great. But I haven't seen her work product.
Anyone else? Zoom trustees, anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Let's, uh, let's open up to the public real quick.
No hands raised at this time.
Okay. Anyone out there? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve resolution number 07-2021? It's confirming the appointment of municipal clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item five. This is an agreement for legal services by the town attorney 2021 and town attorney's goals for 2021.
I think that's Miss Wood, but I'm happy to handle it if she's not on.
Is Lori on? Okay.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, I think they had to change my role. So, mayor and board of trustees, thank you so much for this opportunity. This is a follow-up to some of our earlier conversations about town attorney evaluation and also goals for 2021. I took the liberty to review the agreement that was currently in place with the town attorney's office, and that agreement had been established in 2016. It was time for us to reevaluate that agreement and also renew it and update it a bit. Enough time has passed that it was worth reconsidering. And so after doing some research across many municipalities where there are a variety of agreements and/or contracts that are written for town attorneys, be they on contract or in-house, we came up with a draft, a new agreement for our town attorney, which will take care of assigning legal services and costs for those services and who's responsible for what portions of what fees, et cetera. This was then brought before the town attorney for his evaluations and vetting. Second and third drafts appeared, and those were also vetted by our town administrator. So the agreement that you see before you has been reviewed, researched, and vetted by numerous authorities, if you will, and represents what I would consider to be a healthy new agreement with our town attorney for the upcoming 2021 year. It also gave us the opportunity to increase his fees by a very nominal amount, or the town attorney's fees by a nominal amount. The fees that had been set in 2016 were very much below market standard. And, and even these fees are well below many of the other standards set by municipalities. But this was a fee that both the town administrator and the town attorney felt was appropriate. So I'm, I'm bringing you this, and I'm also hoping that you had a chance to read this contract. In addition to that, I wanted to piggyback with that, taking those top goals that came from the town attorney's evaluation and just formalizing those into an agreement for 2020 goal, 2021 goals for the town attorney, including the fourth goal, which was about coming forward with some succession options, which I believe the town attorney and I will work on in the coming months to come forward with some options for the board to consider town attorney succession options. We're using the word options way too many times, but you know, it's past my bedtime. So there you go. But anyway, I, I bring all this forth to you. I hope you had a chance to read it. And my goal for this evening, if it suits the will of the board, would be for us to approve the new agreement for 2021, as well as the goals for 2021, knowing that the town attorney and I will also be returning to the board with options for succession planning.
Anything, trustees?
So could I get an explanation on what item four town designated representative is? Because I think I have an issue with it, but I would prefer an explanation before I say that I do.
Are you referring to the contract, trustee Gator?
Yes, I believe it's right after availability. It's on page, I think, three or page, page 46 of the packet. It's, uh, item number four says town designated representative.
Yes, did, did you want to reference your question? Or your concern?
Sure. So i- if I read that from what it sounds like, that if I have something I want to talk to the town attorney about, I either have to go through the mayor or the town administrator if it's not at a board meeting. Am I reading that correctly, or no?
That is not my understanding of that, but Brad, if you would like to speak to that?
If I might. Yeah, let me just talk to a couple of things. First off, I really do appreciate, this has been an interesting process for me. But it's also been a revealing process, and I think a really helpful process. And I appreciate all your patience, I appreciate the staff's patience. Certainly, we have been doing this for a long time, and I think there probably were needs to update a lot of what we were doing, which we'll talk about that in a second. My understanding was, was that we specifically raised that question, whether or not I was to be able to talk, call individual, talk, speak to individual board members. And it's my understanding that that was not intended to preclude my speaking to you guys, who are my clients, on a person-by-person basis. One of the things that's recognized, I think, is that I'm hired, one of the things that's clearly recognized is I'm hired by the board and am answerable to the board. And to the degree the board has questions, I, I think it's expected, and I'm going to get the town administrator shaking her head, that I would answer to you guys, and I've tried to be fairly accessible to that end. The, one of the things that, first off, I'm not real sure that this contract is going to do a lot, make a lot of changes to what I've done in the past. These are, it spells out what I believe we have done previously. But it, it is good to have a roadmap. And that has been loose, I suppose, over the course of time. I think a great, substantial amount of what this contract does is simply embody what the statute does. And, and I, I think that's probably valuable, both from an HR standpoint, which the town is getting much more tuned to HR issues, which is great. It's also valuable for the board's standpoint if they want to add things in the future. There have been, and, and you know, if you go down to some of the review items, there are clearly things we need to address. We're making efforts to do that, to that end. Sitting beside me is Dan Sapienza in our office. One of the things that we have recognized, the town's needs are growing substantially. I, I probably spent, for example, today, I'll probably book six to seven hours of time. Yesterday was very similar. There are, you guys have more and more needs that need to be addressed. And I got to do the practice on this one. I don't think, and at one point, the treasurer commented on this in one of our meetings, I, I don't know that the town is ready to hire a in-house town attorney. I think you'll get there. I have been doing this for a long time. The thought was, is that Mr. Sapienza has a few less gray hairs than I do. He also is somewhat more available. One of the things I wanted to thank the staff for is, is we have been included more and more in the leadership team meetings that we've tried very hard to expand what we've done over the last month or so. I now am part of what's called the Civil Role Program, which sends matters out for referral, which is, I think, really streamlined the process and made it a lot easier, because oftentimes we didn't see materials need to be reviewed until they appeared in the board packet. And, and that appreciate was causing frustration, and justifiably so with the trustees. That's not to suggest we don't have things we need to improve upon, and we certainly do. I would suspect, relative, and I don't know if this is succession planning, as Mary said, that's something probably we need to work on with her and certainly with you guys as far as what happens succession wise. But the thought is, is you get some redundancy. If I get hit by a trash truck, you've got somebody else who understands what's going on. And, and, yeah, those are important things. And it also affords you guys hopefully more time. One of the things we need to do is, Dan has some of his own schedule that he has to meet, responsibilities, but I think we'll provide a little bit of wiggle out. And I, hopefully, I'm sorry, I need to move back from the mic. Hopefully that will provide a better product to the board. And I appreciate that's one of the things that I think we need to fill some gaps, so. If anyone wants to talk to Dan, Dan is here. But I think he'll probably be coming to meetings off and on. Let's see if we can integrate him into the process over the course of the next year. Our next appointment obviously is right after the next election. So it would be April of '22, I think, so.
Got something else?
So just, so to clarify, item four is not saying that the individual trustees cannot speak to the town attorney outside of board meetings.
That's what I heard.
Yes.
That is correct.
That's what I've been told.
Okay.
Friends as budget management.
Yeah. It's primary, too. There's others.
Sure, yeah, that's all, just wanted to make sure, that's why it was just some clarification.
Got anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, I, I, trustee Whitehouse, I just had a question which has sort of been on my mind, and this has not been about, it's about this subject, but, so. I didn't know what kind of policy there was for us to call up the town attorney, because typically now we are spending town funds, but we haven't actually had an authorization. I don't know if that's murky or if I'm overthinking this, but obviously, I'm not calling up Brad, like to ask him about fishing, but if there's a question I have, does, does that, does my, is my question clear? Because I'm like, now I'm spending town funds, but it hasn't really been authorized? Or is this just carried in sort of general overhead? Again, it's specifically about the contract, but it's just kind of a general question I've had.
Let me see if I can clarify that, trustee Whitehouse. Again, Brad March, the way that we have normally operated is the board will appro, will budget funds within our contract. And those funds range anywhere from town staff calling us with contract questions. We had questions related to budgeting that we were addressing today. We had initiative and referendum questions relative to what was on the last work session that we met about today. I, I don't think there's a need for the town, and I answer you guys first. I don't think there's, as I've understood it, a need for the, the town to approve every single conversation or the allocation or expenditure associated with each allocation, or each, each, each effort that we undertake. If there's a concern, by all means, I, I would expect to hear from somebody that we need to tone down, or if I'm talking to somebody we shouldn't be talking to, and that sometimes includes the citizenry, too. We get contacted from a wide variety of things and a wide variety of contexts. I, I, I think I have heard that there has not been a concern with our billings. Recognizing volume, we have tried to keep the billings low, and the billing rate, we tried to remain low, just to be cognizant of the fact that there, there were cost issues. If, if, if there's a need to restrict what we're doing, or someone feels that our billings have been excessive, or that they were doing things that haven't been authorized, by all means, feel free to give me a call and go, either adjust bills or talk about it. I've been doing this for a little while, and I think I got a general sense of what the board's pleasure is, as far as what we can and can't do. And I would intend to continue to operate within those spect, that spectrum.
Well, Mr. Marsh, trustee Whitehouse, again, again, I, I certainly wasn't, was more of a general question. It's not specifically about
Understood.
any sort of billing. It's something that's been on my mind for a while, and I'm just cognizant of the fact that typically it takes a majority vote to spend money. And, and maybe I'm overthinking this, but I, it, it's, maybe it's more of a general question, I'll just.
Well, and, and from that perspective, when we have talked about fishing places, I have tried not to bill the town.
Okay. Trustee McDonald, you got anything you want to say? Real quick, you've had a couple of times, you're going to pass it around.
Our town administrator was going to say something earlier.
She was?
Yes, she had the mic in her hand.
I didn't notice that.
It's okay, if this is about the trustees having a discussion, but, so what I've seen in previous municipalities is, this, these are guidelines particularly for public. The public can't, should not be just reaching out to our town attorney. You know, that's billable hours for us. So in that case, we have something in place that says you're supposed to go through the mayor or the town administrator before you contact the town attorney. Another case that I experienced is we had a council member kind of go rogue and be working with the town attorney and, you know, accumulated tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees that ended up being charged back to the town. This particular trustee was in, I won't even say the community. But, you know, really, it was a challenge for them to, they, they exceeded their budget by more than I can say, just because of this one council member. So then, the majority of the council then said, no, we're going, we're going to put something in our policy where you, you know, it, it's available here, you know, saying that you need to contact the mayor or the town administrator before you contact the town attorney. And made that recommend, or made that policy for that particularly, for that particular board member, just so that they could keep it, keep track and keep on, keep track of the budget and things like that. So it's kind of a protection thing. I don't see that, I, when I read that, I didn't see that as prohibiting any of you contacting the town attorney directly on, you know, town matters, and if it's a fishing hole, then so be it. But, you know, it's, it was, I don't think that was the intention. I think the intention was to protect the budget process and protect him from the staff.
We established that this board can talk to the attorney, right?
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely.
Now. Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, yeah, I think that what trustee Gator and trustee Whitehouse, like the two conversations are coupled to me what our town administrator were saying. That clause provides a checks and balance in the event we do have a rogue board member. And additionally, Brad mentioned, or I'm sorry, Mr. March mentioned that we have a growing community. And with that, we're knowing that our legal needs are growing. So this is going to give us the ability to see what those needs are over the next few years and project into the future, what kind of accommodations we may need to look at as Brad is developing his succession planning. Brad provides invaluable historical knowledge for this community that is irreplaceable and needs to be treated with candor and caring. Your service to this community and the above and beyond that you've provided does not go unnoticed. I appreciate you going through this process. I think that it gives us the ability to provide some transparency to the community that we are doing our due diligence with our legal counsel to make sure that we're representing ourselves to the best of our ability. So thank you so much for entertaining the review process and also giving us an opportunity to review your contract as well. So thank you, it's been an enlightening process and fun to work with you on.
It has. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else? Well, trustee Jerome, you have anything to add or no? You're good? Anyone else? We're good?
I think that the objectives and goals match a lot of our needs and requests.
They look pretty good.
I'm a fan, and the contract changes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Brad. Thank you. Public comment?
Mayor, see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to renew the agreement, legal services by the town attorney, twenty-twenty-one, and the town attorney's goal for twenty-twenty-one? Brad?
Still moved.
I'll second that.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. All right, Brad.
Thank you.
And another year. Okay, I got oh, I got eight forty-two. We are going to close our regular meeting, board meeting at this time, and we're gonna open up our liquor license authority meeting, and to do that, we're gonna need a roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Kenny?
Present.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. Okay, this is annual renewal for Ridley's Family Market. Crystal?
Thank you. I apologize with the Zoom controls right here.
That's right.
Stay seated. I'm Crystal Eiker, the town clerk, and Ridley's Family Market has submitted their annual renewal for their liquor store liquor license. In a review of their renewal, the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State's office. They are current with their sales tax, and the Lamar County Sheriff's Office reported no issues directly related to their liquor license. You may notice that this renewal has been submitted a few months ago.
Right.
It was actually submitted through the state, made its way back to Wellington. Took a little bit of work to contact the correct individual corporate office to get some things updated. Got a current lease for the establishment, so it is now before the board tonight.
All right, no issues.
No issues.
No issues. All right. Anybody have any issues they need to bring up with renewing this? Okay, then. Any public issues that we need to bring up with Ridley's? See here anything, Crystal?
There are currently no hands raised at this time.
All right. I don't think there probably will be any. Bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve the annual renewal for Ridley's Family Market, their liquor license?
Still moved?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. All right. I got eight forty-four. We're gonna close our liquor license review board and resume our regular meeting. Move on to Item F, Reports, Town Attorney. Seems to be my night. That's all Brad. There was a suggestion you wanted to talk during my report about the policy issues. What I would propose to do at the next meeting is simply put together a policy that this is off the cuff, but says that the board will not review land use applications absent approval or or absent recommendation from the Planning Commission. I I think it's a pretty simple policy, but I think it meets your concern. If that works, we'll get something that's a little more articulate than that and present it to you. Any comments on that, making this change?
So concerned about that conversation because the board has the full right to approve something that Planning Commission does not recommend for approval. I don't want that to be part of the policy.
So the recommendation could be positive or negative. So they give they could give us a recommendation that says
It's any recommendation.
Any recommendation. And then if at any point we as a board felt they are not giving a they're postponing something, and we feel overwhelmingly that we oppose that, we can always say we're going to
It happens.
make it happen. But to me, it just addresses the underlying issue of we are the ones setting the policy that causes us to postpone versus the postponement happening because, again, staff doesn't want to give out inaccurate information, which is smart, right? We don't want to give bad information. The Planning Commission says they need more time. That's all legitimate. It's all good. But the problem is, is we are basically forced into a decision of postponement because we have no information with which to make a decision. But now we're putting ourselves, this is it to me, I want it to come from us. So staff just says, per board policy, Planning Commission has postponed this, therefore we're bringing this to the board to postpone or whatever, and it's that solves everything for me.
My clarification was just that it's not requiring a recommendation of approval.
It's not. That's why I changed my suggestion from approval to recommendation.
Thank you. But yes, I would like to, I would like to.
I got nothing else. Okay, yeah, let's have that. Sounds pretty good.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So the intent of the policy is to drive a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and in the event that there's no recommendation, then it's automatically tabled until a recommendation is brought forward. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? This is a problem because if there is a motion to approve and that fails, then what happens in that scenario?
Let's take a final action. How about that instead of a recommendation? Well, Brad, if it fails in the Planning Commission, then they can bring it before us in a different
That's still a recommendation to not approve it from the, that's still a recommendation from the, the recommendation from the Planning Commission is not to move forward with it if it fails, the Planning Commission.
But trustee McDonald makes a good point. What could happen is the Planning Commission could choose not to make a recommendation. And so I think you need a final action from the Planning Commission, which may be what you're getting at.
I just need that to be clear because the board still needs to hear it.
That's a good point. Thank you.
So am I understanding that right? Okay.
Uh, anyone else?
I think trustee McDonald had a, do you have further question or clarification?
I just want to, so that that's the direction that we're going, right, is that we're looking for recommendation. I just make sure that we're not going circles, and I'm misunderstanding this. I feel like the scenario I think that we're solving for is a table. If it's tabled, then
Yeah, I I think what I would suggest, and you guys make the direction, but I would suggest you will not proceed without final action from the Planning Commission. That could be a table. Probably wouldn't be a table. If they tabled it to a different date, then it would be final action. It could be, though, a decision not to provide a recommendation. And 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 if that was the case, they could they could just be, they they could not want to say yes or no and send it on to you, and that that happens. So as long as it's a final action was what I was planning on drafting. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, well, I I think that the the devil's in the details, right? So I look forward to seeing the policy in its entirety.
All right, town, town administration.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. So thank you so much for last night, the retreat. I felt it went really well. I went through a lot of my notes last this morning and just was really thrilled with some of the comments and things that were made and some of the some of the tasks that were brought to the to staff to to work on and to bring back to you. So looking forward to getting the full report from Cheryl to make sure I didn't miss anything, and then we'll start rolling some things out. Wanted to let remind you all, for those who haven't participated yet, I set out a duty poll for a town hall. So if you can get into that duty poll and check the two, one of the either both dates or one date that you would be available, hopefully. And you should be getting an invite shortly or sometime soon for the Lamar County Board of County Commissioners meeting. I believe that will be coming, Crystal. So we're coordinating with the Lamar County staff to to get that organized and set that up for all of the trustees and the Board of County Commissioners. We don't anticipate televising that one because we'd like to have it over in the Leaper Center, so it could be sitting in a round table. And, you know, we just don't have the capabilities to do all of the all of this. So it'll be more of just the conversations with the trustees and be able to have public attend in person if they would like. We'll have some tables, some chairs and stuff set out. And that is all I have for you at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, anything from other staff? Oh, any board members have anything that you bring up tonight? Anyone else? Trustee Gators got the floor then, I guess.
All right, so I wanted to bring up a couple of items from the CAC. And so they had a work session actually at five o'clock today, right before our meeting, and they are basically taking what we asked them to do was to go back and discuss moving from Centennial Park. So they are currently going through consideration of the utilizing Wellington Community Park. They're still working out, trying to iron out some of the details. The expectation is to make a final decision on location, hopefully at their March meeting, so coming up here at the beginning of March. What was brought up today was a question about shifting the times, and would it be possible for us to move the AV situation and some of the stuff with fireworks to the community park because that's traditionally been done closer to the high school? But if we were to just leave everything at the community park, we could just keep people there and still view fireworks. There was some questions from Chief Pettit, is that correct?
Captain.
Captain Pettit, okay. It's like I don't know his actual title, as to exactly how that could work. And so what we would need to do is figure out, one, if we're working with B-Lake or whoever works with fireworks, what that's gonna look like. Do we keep the fireworks in the same place and just move the viewing? Do we move the fireworks? What is mitigation that would need to happen? So but part of what that needs to happen, because that's a board decision, we decide on fireworks, not the CAC. It would help to inform their decision if we decide what we're okay with moving some or all portions of the fireworks to the community park. So my request is if we could maybe have staff reach out to either the fire district or to B-Lake or whoever to start to ask some of those questions, if we can get that information together to provide to the CAC at their meeting in March and kind of give them a direction from the board standpoint. Is that something we're comfortable with moving where the viewing for fireworks is? Is that something we don't want to do, just so they can take that into consideration in their decision making?
Point of information. Trustee Gator, are you suggesting moving the actual launch location or just the video proportion?
My personal recommendation would be just the video and encourage viewing from community park, but what was brought up is we could also consider moving the launch location. I have no idea. And so that would, I think, be a question why we need to talk to Mr. or to B-Lake or whoever's gonna do the show, is it gonna be a problem to have the AV in one location and launching in another? Is viewing, I don't know the answer to those questions, so they might come back and say, well, if you're gonna move it to here, we have to move everything. So that's why I just, I don't know the answers to those questions. My recommendation is leave the launching where it is.
Yeah, I mean, that is on town property, which is beneficial for a lot of reasons, but and I don't know if you need to move, but the other big parcel that that property is privately owned farmland. So I I was just trying to clarify if they were thinking about changing the launch location. There may be some other logistic things, but, you know, it's a great idea. So thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
If I might, the other thing you might want to consider is checking with the sheriff's department because you got traffic issues that are more severe, I think, that are down by the park because you're gonna have to pull people into the neighborhood. You got people going through the neighborhood. So just think about that one, too.
Sure. So I don't know if the board, does the board have a feeling one way or the other on initially from the, obviously, I know we need to get details from, but from board standpoint, is the board, are you comfortable?
My personal opinion, leave it where it is one more year because it's been B-Lake this year. We've been doing this contract next year. It's going out for bid.
Okay.
Am I correct on that? Right. That's mine. Now, anyone else?
Anyone else on the board? I I I just, I need to give them one, either way, I don't, it doesn't matter what you decide.
Is there? Do they have a problem with it being where it's at?
No, no, it's not. It was just, it was an idea that was brought up, and then, again, because that's, we decide the fireworks, but they just need to know from their planning standpoint whether to plan according to we need to let people go so that they can get to the fireworks. Or if that's all gonna be at the community park, they can make arrangements for vendors and people to stay at the park longer because people are gonna be there longer.
I think this warrants a a deeper discussion. So I I would like to ask that maybe we make this a future agenda item and invite Captain Pettit and the sheriff's office to share their concerns relative to what they're asking or recommending relocating the launch location.
And Ehrlich, too, we need Brian in here.
It would probably be a good idea to have him as well.
Okay.
But I think it it does warrant a bigger discussion.
Okay.
Could we commit to getting that on our next work session perhaps, and then maybe invite the CAC to, or at least a couple of members to join us?
Might be a great place to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not? Can we do that, Patty?
In my mind, I think we should empower the CAC to do this research and provide a recommendation, and then those meetings, those people that attend a CAC meeting.
Well, the the board handles the firework logistics because of the liability reasons, and that's why we take over we've taken over that decision-making relative to the the logistics of the fireworks, so the the CAC is involved in all of the other logistics and planning of the Fourth of July events. It's specifically just the fireworks due to the safety and liability.
They they are working through right now the pros and cons of do we keep the parade on Cleveland? Do we move the parade? Do we do everything at Centennial and cut it? So they they are going through, and as the board requested, they had, today was a work session. They had a special meeting specifically to kind of hash some of that stuff out. This was just something that came up that was outside their purview, so that's where we needed back to the board for direction. So I will let them know that our desire is to hopefully include the CAC or at least some members of the CAC. Maybe I can try to just have the CAC appoint maybe two members of the CAC to attend that work session in official CAC capacity in that we can go from there.
So it, we aren't really moving that parade?
We don't know yet. They they've not made a decision yet. That's a discussion. Is
That's breaking tradition big time, right?
So, again, it's not a discussion that, as of most of the discussion, was that we should probably keep the parade on the and move some of the events after, but that's still, again, the final decision is expected to be made on March meeting. Or maybe.
They're gonna vote to move it?
Well, they need to vote, because there's split opinions on to splitting things up. So basically, the discussion was if we have the parade on Centennial, part of the challenge with Centennial is it's just the town is outgrowing the park in terms of our Fourth of July. We have tons of people that show up. So it's a major concern for the fire district just because of all the stuff that we have going on there. And so the discussion has been, well, Wellington Community Park is much larger. There's a lot more room. We can spread things out. But then part of the concern has been, okay, well, if we have the parade on Main Street, and then we're trying to then transport people, no, not that Wellington's that far, but halfway across town to get to the rest of the facilities. And so one of the things that have been brought up is, well, do we just move the parade into that area as well? But there's been mixed opinions on that. Some people think that's a good idea. Others are saying, no, we we'd prefer to keep things on the Main Street for the parade and put the other stuff out at the park. So that's the plan is on the March meeting to make a decision from the CAC so that they have a direction going forward, because right now they're they have both sides.
I bet. Why wouldn't why wouldn't they leave some of it there at the park and move, you know, split it up a little bit and spread it out? Is that possible? Fire Department or what? I mean, I don't know.
No, that was that was a conversation that was brought up. There there was there was pros and cons on both sides. Some of the concerns if we move the parade away from the everything else. We have a lot of volunteers and members who are helping to prepare the booths and things like that that might not be able to watch the parade. And this, that's one of the nice things now is that they can stop and watch the floats go by or as they're working. And so there are some legitimate concerns on both sides, but there are, again, the decision has not been made, but they the plan is to have a direction and the decision on the March meeting, I believe.
So for us, what you're asking is at the future work session, a discussion specifically about fireworks.
Fireworks and location, whether we leave that, move that, what that looks like. That way, the CAC can include that into their planning for what they're doing, regardless of location, they can do that. So then I'll let them know at the meeting in March to plan for a couple of members to join us for that work session.
Yep, we got it on our next work session.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Other trustees?
Just a reminder to everybody watching in here to support local businesses. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Zoom members? I don't know why it came up at that time tonight. I'm sorry. I'll get that figured out. I'll fix it next time. Guys, got anything?
Mr. Mayor.
All right, I don't have anything either then. All right, I don't have anything either then. I got nine o'clock. If there's nothing else, that's a journalist meeting. Can I get a motion? Everybody?
Moves that we adjourn our meeting?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.